I'd like to call the meeting to order if we could all rise, please all rise for our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Clerk. Could you please call the roll?
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Minks?
Here.
Trustee Ramos?
Absent with notice.
Trustee Thill?
Here.
Trustee Travis?
Here.
Trustee Whitco?
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I need approval of our minutes from our regular meeting on March 8th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Trustee Thill, seconded by Trustee Minks. Any discussions, questions, clarifications? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Special reports? There are none. Public hearings? There are none. Plan Commission reports? None. Residents' comments? This is on agenda items only. Residents' comments on agenda items only.
None were aware of.
Thank you very much, Ralph. Under President's report, a few things. There was an event yesterday at Niles West High School, and I've gotten a few emails and some phone calls as to why myself or none of our board members were present. Well, it's hard for all of us to go somewhere when we're not notified about it. So I say that kind of tongue-in-cheek, obviously, because I for sure would know that I would be there and I know my board members would have been there. So that being said, I'm just going to make some comments here. On behalf of the Village of Morton Grove, I extend our sincere condolences to the families of the eight innocent women, two white and six Asian Americans, who last week while working at three spots in the Atlanta area were senselessly shot and killed. While the investigation is ongoing, I condemn and repudiate whatever sick form of discrimination that seems to have motivated these attacks. COVID-19 has significantly impacted individuals throughout Illinois with regard to race, national origin, religion, or gender. But sadly during the past year, Asian-Americans have faced increased instances of discrimination and hate crimes. Hate crimes against Asian-Americans in 16 of the largest US cities rose by 150% in 2020, and no doubt this latest incident, whether labeled a hate crime or not, can only contribute to the anguish and fear Asian-Americans have been experiencing. All Morton Grove residents express solidarity with the people of Asian descent during this time of tragedy. After all, we are almost 30% of an Asian population. We condemn racism in all forms and violence towards all women, and especially Asian-American women at this time. We call upon our leaders at the local, state, and federal level to work together to stop discrimination and attacks towards Asian-American members of our community. We've worked very hard here in Morton Grove to establish and promote a tolerant and diverse community. In fact, I think so much so that I've mentioned it many times at many events and even right from this dias before that I think we do better than anybody else, possibly even in the whole entire world. So our diversity is a strength, and it has been a big selling point when families choose Morton Grove as the community to call their home. We cannot ignore the world around us, and we cannot fall victim to weakness. Please do not hesitate to report any incidents of hate or biased crimes, comments, or actions to the Morton Grove Police Department at 847-470-5200, or just dial 911 if an emergent threat is present. That's my comments on that. It's a horrible situation. America's better than that. And I think a lot of this, you know, we have to stick together. Obviously, that's the best way to conquer it. So that's my comments on that. Again, we were not at Niles West yesterday because none of us were aware of it. So just wanted to make that a known fact. COVID-19 information, here we go. I don't want this to be blah, blah, blah because it's starting to feel that way, but it is so important. Today, Monday, March 22nd, 1B-plus vaccination access open to all Cook County, at all Cook County vaccination sites. Phase 1B-plus includes individuals 16 years and older with cancer, chronic kidney disease, COPD, diabetes, heart conditions, immune compromise from organ transplant, obesity, pulmonary disease, and sickle cell disease, as well as individuals with disabilities, pregnant women, and smokers. So Danielle, she'll be ready to go. Vaccine supply continues to be the largest limiting factor across the United States for vaccination distribution. Village staff has and will continue to seek partnerships with local pharmacies toward the development of a local vaccination opportunity. All of our pharmacies have expressed willingness to work with us, but vaccine availability is the current hurdle. When we receive authorization for a broad-based registration opportunity, notice will be provided to the community on social media and with our mass communication reverse 911 phone systems. As previously indicated, the best place for current COVID-19 information continues to be the Village of Morton Grove website as it contains the most up-to-date information on vaccination signup, as well as resident and business support. As previously mentioned regarding the vaccine, scheduling for individuals that do not have access to a computer, email, or internet may call the Cook County COVID-19 Vaccine Enrollment Helpline at 833-308-1988. Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM to sign up for the vaccine. Keep calling. It's obviously, there's an overwhelming amount of phone calls. Let's keep up the great effort. Morton Grove's COVID positivity rate is currently 3.8%. To do that, we got to continue to wear our face coverings, watch your social distancing, wash your hands often. Please keep current with your healthcare provider on regarding vaccine availability and your general health. I don't have a mask on tonight only because I'm running the meeting and I want to make sure that people can hear me, not only here, but also at home. So that's why I don't wear a mask, but I do have it right here. And I do wear it when I'm not up here. Let's help our local retailers, restaurants, and bars during these unprecedented times. Please continue to go to our local businesses as you feel comfortable. They need your support now more than ever. The weather's getting better, so we got to, again, get them through this hump here for probably another, well, some people would say six weeks. To me, it's probably another 10 weeks before it gets warm, but it's the time of the year where they still need us, so let's do everything we can to help them. Speaking of which, we're excited to announce that Cooper's Hawk Winery and Restaurant has brought its concept to Morton Grove, its newest location opening on March 29th at 6731 Dempster in the Sawmill Station Center. The Morton Grove location is the privately-owned company's 14th in Illinois and its 45th nationwide. Cooper's Hawk hired nearly 100 people within the community, hiring front of the house and back of the house operations. Very proud about that. Great job to our board. Thank you. Our staff, thank you. Cooper's Hawk, thank you. The new Cooper's Hawk location offers wine tasting, a wine club, a wine shop with wines and accessories, and an eating area suitable for both dining and business meetings. Another outstanding addition to what I think is already a hugely successful Sawmill Station Lifestyle Center. I also did want to mention the nice note that we have here. This came onto my desk about yesterday or the day before. It's great, just sending a note to say thank you. Thank you to all the staff at the village. Thank you to all the fire and police departments. Thank you to public works. You did a great job keeping our roads clean and salted during snowstorms, as always. Thank you to Groot. You all are so appreciated, and what you do matters. Sincerely, a grateful resident. So I like to share positivity when some of the earlier comments I had were a little too negative for me, but we're going to get through it, so we're going to leave that with a positive note. I have no further comments tonight. Clerk's report? Clerk is absent with notice. Sabah's filling in. You have anything?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Staff reports? Village Administrator?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Corporate counsel? Thank you. Reports by trustees? Trustee Greer? I did forget the most important thing of the night here is I do want to appoint Michael Stein to our zoning board of appeals, sorry, Mike, in Plan Commission to a five-year term. Mike's resume is stellar. I think he's going to do a fantastic job for us, and we appreciate you stepping up to the plate. He's new to Morton Grove, and he jumped right in town and jumped right on, "Can I help? Can I help?" That's the type of resident we look for, so we appreciate it. So I want a round of applause for Mike. With that, I just need a motion to concur.
Motion to concur.
Motion's made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee, hold on, Whitco. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Michael, congratulations. Thank you very, very much. Trustee Greer, thanks for pointing it out to me. You're up.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I do have a ordinance, and this is a second read, so there will be action taken tonight. This is ordinance 21-05. I know the people in the audience have been in numerous meetings for this ordinance, and it's finally here on the last possible moment here for to get it through here. So this is approving a special use permit to allow for the expansion of a non-boarding school at 8701 Menard Avenue, which is known as Julia S. Malloy Educational Center. So I would like to make a motion that we accept this ordinance 21-05. And Ralph, after we take the motion, I'm going to make the motion, but I'd like to have you comment on a couple sticklish points on this, if you wouldn't mind, especially for the parking. And we've had some residents, and it's unfortunate. It's always at the residential neighborhoods, and we always have concerns. And I know you'll step to the plate as you always do. So I make that motion that we accept 2105.
Motion's made by Trustee Greer, seconded by Trustee Thill. Any discussions, questions, clarifications? Based on Trustee Greer's remarks. Ralph, if you'd like to add?
Sure. The trustee and several of the board members, we've discussed the, some of the concerns of residents, which is a great thing to bring forward when they have the open sessions for the public hearings, for the Plan Commission, zoning, traffic safety. There were some concerns about parking. There were some concerns about exhaust that were brought to this board, brought to other boards. And one of the conditions that is included in the special use is that the, my office, the Village Administrator, but certainly through our staff, whose expertise in making things work in this community, will work with the superintendent and executive director in principle of the Malloy Center to make sure that we understand the situation regarding parking. We are out in the field right now. We take a look at right-of-way concerns at various levels. The police department usually takes the lead on these things, along with engineering, to make sure we're making the right moves in public works, and fire to make sure public safety is right. So this particular corridor and area is under review by this committee for right-of-way review, and we're also looking at the fact that we're on unusual times. We're currently on COVID setup or establishment for the school, so there's less buses, there's more cars coming to the site. So we're cognizant of that, and we also knew in the future, when we get back to normal, which we hope is very soon, that there'd be a reversal of that, and there'd be more buses. So being cognizant of that, being cognizant of what's happening in the street, and listening to the residents, all the residents that presented the information at any one of the meetings was contacted by one of our deputy chiefs of police to gain information directly from them. And we'll continue to monitor that condition to make sure that the solutions that we put forward, working with the school, working with the residents, are the right thing that happens in the community. So we made that pledge at the Plan Commission, and we will keep that promise. It's just not idle talk. We'll make sure that these things occur, and this board has given us that directive if they so desire to move forward with the special use, because it is a condition of the special use. Hopefully, I've answered your question.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Thill?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Ordinance 2105 passes 5 to 1.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, guys. Good stuff. Very good stuff.
Thanks for your patience. And, Your Honor, I do now have a resolution. This is Resolution 21-25. This is authorizing the purchase of four police squad cars through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. This resolution authorizes the purchase of two police sports utility squad cars from Curry Motors in Frankfurt, Illinois, and two police squad car sedans from Roche Chrysler Jeep Dodge in Elmhurst. And these four vehicles total out to be $124,791, and I move that we accept Resolution 21-25.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Greer, seconded by Trustee Minks. Any discussions, questions, clarification? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Thill?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Resolution 21-25 passes.
Thank you very much.
And that's the end of my report, sir.
Thank you, Trustee Greer. Trustee Minks?
No report.
Thank you. Trustee Ramos is absent with notice. Trustee Thill?
No report.
Thank you. Trustee Travis?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution. I have Resolution 21-24, authorizing the purchase of a 2021 Chevrolet Silverado 1,500 four-wheel-drive crew cab work truck. The Morton Grove Fire Department operates a utility pickup truck to provide department operations. The current 2007 Ford F-150 has reached the end of its serviceable life due to ongoing mechanical and corrosion issues. The Northwest Municipal Conference, through its affiliation with the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, solicited bids for the purchase of pickup trucks and awarded a contract for the Chevy Silverado pickup truck purchases to Curry Motors. The fire department has negotiated terms, additional required, and a credit for the trade-in of the department's 2007 Ford F-150 and a 2008 Chevy Express that has been deemed to be surplus property by the Village Administrator and the Finance Director. This resolution will authorize the Village Administrator to execute a purchase order with Curry Motors Chevrolet of Forest Park to purchase a 2021 Chevrolet utility pickup truck for the amount of $23,971.68, including a trade-in credit for a 2007 Ford F-150 and a 2008 Chevy Express. So I move that we accept Resolution 21-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Travis, seconded by Trustee Whitco. Any discussions, questions, clarification? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Thill?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Resolution 21-24 passes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I also have a bit of Community Relations Commission business. First is the Outstanding Neighbor Recognition Program. So the Morton Grove Community Relations Commission wants to give you the opportunity to acknowledge your outstanding neighbors for doing special things that make your neighborhood a better place. Your outstanding neighbor can be any age or background. He or she may be a youth, a teenager, a longtime resident, new to Morton Grove, a senior citizen, or a business that makes a positive difference in your neighborhood. He or she may be known by everyone or an unsung hero. Visit our Outstanding Neighbor page for more details and to nominate your outstanding neighbor. And then I also want you to save the date, April 24th, for the 10th Morton Grove Community Artist Performance. That will happen at 4 o'clock on Zoom and live stream. It's entitled "Spring Forward," and there is an open call for artists happening between March 15th and April 16th. You can submit prerecorded submissions to www.identityperformingarts.org/projects-aspx. So you can also find information about that in the newsletter that comes out on Fridays. So that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Travis. Trustee Whitco?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution tonight. Resolution 21-26, authorizing a task order with Siorba Group for the Main Street Improvements Project. The village is developing a project to replace an important segment of water mains serving the east side of the village and the sewer utilities and pavement located within the same right-of-way corridor of Main Street from Lincoln Avenue to Nagel Avenue. The project engineering exceeds the expertise and capability of the Engineering Division staff. Resolution 18-08, approved on January 22nd, 2018, authorized staff to negotiate a task order contract with Siorba Group for professional engineering services. Village staff negotiated the scope of work with Siorba Group to provide preliminary and design engineering services for this project. The project is eligible for use of tax increment financing funds in Lincoln Ferris Tiff District. The fiscal impact is $130,033.50. I move that we approve Resolution 21-26.
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Whitco, seconded by Trustee Travis. Any discussion, questions, clarification?
Clarification, Your Honor? Thank you, sir. I know finance is here, but Ralph, you mentioned the tax increment, the Tiff in Lehigh. The whole $130,033.33 is coming from the Tiff, or the portion, or is it the whole thing?
No, it'd be 100% from that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Greer?
Absolutely, aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Thill?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Resolution 21-26 passes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And lastly, I have some reminders from the Environmental and Natural Resources Commission. Be on the lookout for the passports to a greener Morton Grove to be delivered to your house in the mail. They can also be picked up at Village Hall, and they're available on the Village website. Let's not forget about the Mayor, Mayor De Maria's challenge for residents to conserve water, energy, and other natural resources by participating in the 2021 Wyland Foundation's annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation during the month of April. You can win many prizes, including the grand prize of $3,000 toward home utility bills, plus a local charity will win a Toyota Highlander. And lastly, get your free COMED Energy Assessment, which includes free and discounted products for your homes. You can schedule this by calling 630-929-2231. And all of this information and more regarding sustainability and Earth Day-related events and activities will be coming to you in the village's newsletter, the special Earth Month edition, which, on behalf of Mayor De Maria and the board, I'd like to thank Sabah for all of her work, hard work, on this special edition, and she did a fabulous job. So yay. So be on the lookout for all of that, and hope you all participate. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Whitco. Any other business brought before the board tonight?
Your Honor, I wouldn't mind mentioning one thing. Don't give me that dirty look. I know Clerk Hartford's not here, but she's probably not here for a nice reason because it is her birthday, so shout out to her. I'm not going to tell you her age, but she went to school with me, so she's no spring chicken. But happy birthday to Clerk Hartford.
Thanks, Trustee Greer. Presentation of warrants, Trustee Minks?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to present the warrants this evening in the amount of $742,426.90. I move that we approve the warrants as presented.
Motion made by Trustee Minks, seconded by Trustee Whitco. Any discussions, questions, clarification? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the vote.
Trustee Greer?
Aye.
Trustee Minks?
Aye.
Trustee Thill?
Aye.
Trustee Travis?
Aye.
Trustee Whitco?
Aye.
Pass, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Residents' comments? Ralph, anything come in on non-agenda items in the email?
Yes, we had two submittals, actually three questions from two individuals. So Lori Fishman, Morton Grove resident, "I attended the community vigil in Skokie with dozens of local officials and several hundred citizens to stand with our Asian friends and neighbors in the aftermath of the Asian, and specifically Asian, women hate crimes." It was held on Sunday, March 21st, at 4:00 PM at Laramie Park. I learned about it on Facebook. I was disappointed that I didn't see any of the Morton Grove officials there. The question is, why was Morton Grove not represented by our elected leaders? I think you answered that at the beginning of the intro. I wasn't aware. You weren't aware. And I don't think any of our elected officials were aware, so I think we certainly would have been there. Next one is from Beverly Copeland. She's a Morton Grove resident, submitted two questions. One, "Yesterday, I attended the Asian-American rally in memory of the women who died last week. There were political reps from different towns, but no one represented Morton Grove, even though we have so many Asian folks in our village. That was disappointing," same answer that we provided previously. And then I heard, the second question is, "I heard disturbing news about complaints made at Parkview School about kids making inappropriate Nazi-related comments. Morton Grove is not free from racism." We'll look into these and check into the situation, and certainly get back to the resident and also understand what's happening at Parkview School. We got this this afternoon. So thank you.
And I checked with Chief Simo earlier in the day, and I know that he doesn't have any formal complaints of such nature, so we will continue to monitor that, of course, but again, I want to be perfectly clear that we have no formal complaints on that. So I don't want people panicking and thinking that there's racism all over Morton Grove, and that's not the case. I'm not saying that, it doesn't exist. I'm sure it does in some little spockets here and there, but we have no formal complaint. So again, similar to riding Metro or CTA, if you see something, say something, but we can't help or we can't do anything about it if we don't know about it. So if that's the case, I hope that they can at least address that with the police department, because as of right now, as I said, there's no complaints.
I did have a resident bring something to me. I'll read the comments that were presented. It's a Morton Grove resident. Ashuk Diasa Desai, thank you very much for clarifying that. There's a couple of comments here. I'll try and start from the top. "Bensenville suburb has a snow program, $15 paid by seniors each time, and balance paid by the village." This resident did come in my office. We are doing some research on this particular situation and checking into what Bensenville's process is. Next is, "Water bill has not been classified as a utility bill, and his credit card does not recognize it as a utility bill." We have had some discussions about this. I'll speak to the resident about it. Our finance department has looked at it, but it is really a situation that goes back to how the credit card looks at it, not how we develop our bill. It's pretty plain that it's a utility bill from the village and not a service fee, but we can chat with them some more on that. "At Birch and Dempster Avenue, construction debris, plastic, et cetera, was not picked up at the time and complained twice. Finally, I was, it was done. More than five weeks I picked up debris." That's a new situation that I wasn't aware of previously, but I could certainly talk to the resident about it also. Pest control expenses. There was a comment to our finance department, advised to call the Cook County Department of Animal Control. They did not pay for it. As a little background, the resident had a rodent control situation in his private residence and was talking to staff on several occasions as to the fact that these were rodents, came from the village, and since they came from the village, the village should pay for their removal. We've talked about it, and we've talked about it with the county. We've also talked about it with the resident, but he indicated that he'd like to make the board aware of the fact that he had expenses from residents. I think I'm representing you correctly, that he represents that these were Morton Grove raccoons? Morton Grove raccoons that entered his house and caused damage to his particular individual residents, and he's looking for reimbursement from the village. You could come up to the microphone if you'd like to speak. Correct, Mayor?
Of course.
I don't want to misrepresent any of your positions. I'll keep this. Is that all right? Or you want it? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Please. Yeah, right here. Please.
See, my wife and I, both are retired people and living on Social Security. I'm not complaining about anything. But then I spent $1,090. Then I talked to Hannah. I mean, that was a few months ago. And she told me that she cannot do anything village. So she gave me a phone number of Cook County and told me that to call them. So I called them, then the Cook County told me that it is not our responsibility. Why don't you go back to your village? So then I went back to our village, and then nothing was done, you know? And I'm staying in Morton Grove since last 20 years. I always paid my taxes, property taxes in time. Every single time I paid my water bill in time, then I think the village should do something, about $1,090. And I made the copies of my bill that I paid to take care of this animal control thing and gave it to the, you know, gave it to Hannah, and the other day I was here, and I don't know, I talked to Ralph.
Yes.
I talked to you. Yeah, I talked to you, and I think I gave you those copies also.
I don't, you didn't provide me any copies. You just gave me a summary of your concern.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it is. Yeah, yeah, that's what it is.
Okay, yes.
That's what it is. And another thing that I mentioned, that I got upset, you know, it's not a big deal to people, but I live by dumpster and watch, close to that, and there was some debris from construction, you know, and that was left there for at least five weeks, five weeks, and nobody cares to, cared to do anything. Two times I complained here, I was passing by, because I'm, I live in Morton Grove, so I was passing by, there was two time I complained, and finally it was done, but it took them five weeks to do the cleanup, five weeks. And the other things I did mention, that's all, so if you can do something, please do it, or, you know, because I talked to Ralph, I talked to Hannah, and everybody told me that I should go to one of the village meetings and present myself to the mayor.
That's good.
So that's what I'm doing.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that, and Ralph can give you my email address and my direct line to my office, so when you see something like that, you can call my office, and then I'm at least well, aware of it right away. When you see something, let me know, and I'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
Thank you.
It, it matters, and it's, it's good when residents tell us something's laying on the street or something, we like to get it cleaned up, so, get my information from Ralph, and you don't have to hesitate to call me.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, no problem.
I'll give you a call.
Anything else, Ralph?
No, Mayor.
No one else? We do have one person in the audience tonight, Mr. Rudolph Vilk. Sabah, do me a favor.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you received by email letters Ralph to me, when he sent me, I'm not possible to ask people something to do, it's, for example, what I asked him, show me my letters to each member of trustee, no, 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 it's not answer, it's not, it's not questions, it's not answer, it's what he said, but I'm not asking privately something, what your name, where you live, which kind husband you have or wife, I asking yours part job here in Morton Grove, like member, board of trustee. February 22, Mr. Greer, he sitting in this, the same place like Mrs. Minks, and he receive my letters, and what he do with my letters from February 22, he make like this, going to this side. He want to show me, or show to everybody, he not respect me, it's okay, you not respecting your place, whatever you take it, yours place like member of trustee, it's what you show to everybody, you don't care, okay, you put to garbage, it's mean you not read my letters. Now, I ask a favor, because I'm not make sure what, what doing another one, member of trustee, I want to ask you a favor, can I do me a favor, next session, bring all letters when I send personal to each one, included when you receive by email from Mr. Ralph. Mr. Ralph also told me, second or third time, each car with its registration in Morton Grove must have a village sticker, doesn't matter it's used or not, and I explained to him before, I told him, and told to Mrs. Teresevichov Moniston, personal, I'm not use this car, and what happens? I, I need just make it one more, one more step, going to Secretary of State, make cancel license plate number. Mrs. Teresevichov Moniston knows these rules, why she not give me this advice? No, 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 she look to me like boss to slave, and told me, pay bill, pay, to, to...
30 seconds, Rudy, please.
My point is, please, I don't care which kind answer you give me for my letters, I ask many times, and I knows, you supposed to be have president's board member, president, I don't know who is who, but you knows, please, when you agree with Mr. Ralph, just sign it, with each letter what he sent to me, just sign it, and I agree, doesn't matter, you, you, you good opinion, bad opinion, to, to me, I need your signature, because I need make it next steps, and I wait for next session, and I hope you bring my all letters what I give you personal, please do me a favor, make this.
Thanks, Rudy.
I need to make sure what you not make it like Mr. Greer put to garbage, because I make it my job, I make it hard job, I, I spend a lot of time, I spend a lot money to, to, to buy everything, and, and you just throw away, it's yours part job.
We have your...
Please do this.
Thanks, thanks, Rudy.
I very appreciate it.
Your comments are noted.
Have a great day, everybody, have a great night.
You too, be careful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I have been at every board meeting when Mr. Vilk has come up and stated his objections to a lot of things. I carry all your letters, and maybe unbeknownst to you, this board, for the concurrence to the mayor, we hired Mr. Zawinski. We hired him like we have Ms. Terry Liston, and we hired the fire chief and the police chief and the public works director because of their specialty knowledge that they have. I can't go and be a police officer or a fireman, I don't know how to direct those individuals, but I, with the concurrence of the rest of my members, have hired Ralph Zawinski to handle a lot of those activities for us. And we go over a lot of the various bills and adjustments to the budget in October, when we have our budget meetings, and we compare our fees and our services to all the other communities that are in our area to try and keep abreast of any changes or anything that we may need to keep the village running smoothly. And that's our job, is to look at the bigger picture, not to look down to say that your car is not registered. We look at all the vehicles in town to be registered, and those are the laws that we follow. The laws are set up by the state, they are adopted by the village, and we, here, handle them and support them throughout everybody that lives in town. And I know not everyone feels 100% the same, just like you, they have issues with things, but we have to govern for the masses, we're not governing for you, and then a different rules for somebody else, we have to govern for everyone. And I know you've had issues with the water, and I can tell you, Trustee Thill and I sat in a presentation back in, I believe it was 2009, for a company that came in and did a consultation for us on our water, and what we needed to do going forward to be able to keep our water and our sewers operating in their prime condition. And we adjusted those things going forward. So the fact that you are upset that we're not all responding to you, we respond to you by Mr. Zawinski's comments, because he is representing the board on these things. I'm not going to write a separate letter to you or to any other resident, because if a resident asks me a question, and I don't know all the ins and all the outs on every law that we have on the books here, I go to either the department directors, or I go to Ralph Zawinski, and I ask the question. In fact, I just asked a question earlier this evening of Tom Freel, because I don't know absolutely everything, and I rely upon the personnel that we have hired for the jobs that they do, because they have the expertise in those fields. I do not. I look at the big picture, I hear the minutia, but I don't know all the minutia. And I get very upset when I hear you disparaging the people that we have hired to represent our various departments to us. They come to us with the knowledge, and they say, we need to fix this, or we need to change that, or this evening, when we were passing the ordinance for the Julia Malloy School, there are things that are in that ordinance that will address some of the concerns that people have had, and that was put in there because they came to us and things were changed. But we're not going to change your water bill, or the fact that you don't want to register your vehicle because you don't use your car. Those are the laws that are on the books. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Trustee Greer, no, 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 that's okay, trust, no, please sit down, no. Rudy, Rudy?
No.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Trustee Thill, seconded by Trustee Minks to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is, meeting's closed at 7:39. Thank you.